You have something different, now, clerton?
Clerton.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be calling to order the Thursday, March twenty eighth, term township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting. If we all could please rise in fair respect of the place.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting tonight's role, who could note the role for this evening?
Uh, Mr. Spitz.
Present.
Don?
Present.
John Knoll, present. Mr. Corr, there.
Present.
We have absent, uh, Robert Turner, Justin Ballard, and Tom Burton.
Thank you. We do have a forum. Number four, we will take a motion to approve tonight's agenda, but before we do, I do want to make a note for the commissioners and the public that number nine, the applicant has asked to reschedule that, so we will not be discussing the site plan review, but I know so many of you have come out to speak tonight during, during number seven, we will take public comments and we will discuss that at that time. So if I can have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll move to approve the agenda for March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, minus the public hearing for the site plan, presidential plan, unit development.
A second?
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number five, conflict of interest in ex parte contact.
None for me? None.
None for this evening? Number six, approval of the minutes from Planning Commission Regular Meeting dated two twenty-two twenty-four.
Mr. Trell, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Meeting dated two twenty-four, two twenty-two twenty-four.
I'll support.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion carried. Okay, so we are on to number seven, public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing on this agenda, which this would now fall on that. What I will ask is, the rules that we go by is each person come up to the podium, you'll be given three minutes to state your name, discuss anything you would like. What I would ask, because this is being recorded, is if you agree with the person before you, great, but maybe not go into a long speech on the same thing that was just discussed. So with that, I'll open up number seven. Yeah, we will need name and address when you come to the podium. Um, to the podium, please.
I'm going to hand out something to you. My talking point. Sorry, there's enough for each one of the three or four of them.
Okay, we will have a timer for the three minutes, so when it gets too close to time, kind of wrap things up.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Roy Geller, and I live on eight-three-five Woodley Way on Oxford, and here are my comments. I have eleven comments. Number one, with what is sandy area that is contoured like a bowl where the perimeter is rising above the interior, the majority of snow and rain is combined in the area with sand absorbing most of the water. Proposed pudd would basically flatten the area and cover it with buildings, roads, and grass. This would provide much less absorption of rain, snowfall. Therefore, the surrounding lakes and terrain have to absorb much of the runoff. The retention pond at the southwestern corner is inadequate to absorb this water. Fertilizer runoff would cause excessive growth in the lakes. We already have that problem with Oxford Lake. It has to be done every year, twice, at least twice a week, twice a year. Two, currently morning and evening traffic through the Oxford Lake subdivision via Oxford Road Drive is excessive due to outsiders using the road to reach Lakeville Road in order to avoid traveling through the village via M twenty-four or Glaspy. These are people outside Oxford Lake bypassing Oxford Village to reach the schools at Lakeville Print Trailer Park. Many of these people exceed speed limits and don't stop for signs, street signs. The police have not been able to reduce, eliminate this traffic. Three, Oxford Lake subdivision owns a buffer zone on the east side of Oxford Lake, drive to Drainer with pine trees growing on the property as well as farther to the east. The pudd layout does not indicate this in the drawings, and the condominiums are close to the road. Four, there are many types of wildlife in a proposed pudd which would lose their homes. These include foxes, rabbits, deer, geese, turkeys, ducks, pheasants, turtles, frogs, and other species. Much of the wetlands further to the lakes, further from the lakes, would be lost. Residents on all shores of the lakes would lose the views of the wildlife that are there presently. Five, traffic at the intersection of Drainer and twenty-four is already Class F, peak hours. Adding one hundred and sixty-four additional residents as well as the Clearview subdivision excavating farther to the east of Drainer will exacerbate the situation, causing major backups of that section. Retiming of the traffic lights will have minimum effect, and backups will frequently end up at Oxford Lake Drive. Exiting entering Oxford Lakes from Drainer and especially Lakeville without traffic lights will cause backups in dangerous conditions with people rushing to get out onto major roads. Four, six, there is no south-north-south road east of the pudd to reach Lakeville Road, forcing all traffic to M fifty-four or Glaspy to reach the north. Seven, the east end of the proposed pudd has no eastern exit, making it necessary to travel west of the eastern exits. If there is a major emergency, fire or flood, which blocks the road between the condominiums and the single-family homes, there will be no exit. The crossroads for Ruth Road, Youth Road would only be available for fire and police with a knockout fence. Eight, looking at the topological map, it appears that seven-icent amount of wetlands and forests to the east of the pudd would be cut, filled, and homes placed. Nine, the eastern section of the pudd proposal where the condos is, are located has proposed already greater than the zoning for that area. Ten, Clearview Homes' development farther east on Drainer has been completely stripped, and hundreds of homes built are to be built. All that traffic, wildlife, life loss, and rain runoff will contribute even more change. Videos of the area and on Oxford residents' Facebook, that's basically what I had to say. I spent three days walking though that terrain, up and down the hills and through the forests and the, and the, and the sandlands, and there's a lot of wildlife out there. It is like a, it is like a bowl, and when you come in, it goes down, and all that area absorbs the water from the rain, from that whole area. With it, with this proposal, it lifts all that land up, cuts out the, the berms, and ends up with a flat plate, plain where much of that water and fertilizer and everything else is going to flow into all the lakes around the area. Aaron Lake is a very nice, pristine-looking lake. I took some videos of it this, this afternoon, and I'd, it'd be a shame to lose that. I already see water draining down through the sewers over it down into the, into that lake from the, from the Clearview, uh, building. They haven't gotten any homes there yet either. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job, Mike.
My name's Ed Taurauski, I live at thirty Spring Lake Drive. I agree with a lot of what Roy said except one thing. You mentioned a hundred and sixty more residents. That's a hundred and sixty more families with most likely two vehicles, not one. So that's three hundred and twenty more vehicles. Oxford Lake Sub, our roads are already crumbling, and this is going to make it worse. The drop-off points on Oxford Lakes Drive that residents and non-residents tend to use for dropping their kids off at the middle school is an absolute cluster, and, you know, I fear it's going to get way, way, way worse. The other thing that doesn't really pertain to this directly, but I heard a few years ago from a commercial customer of mine, um, I don't know if there was a Burger King there on Lapeer Road at one time, just north of Drainer, that there was going to be a cut-through road from Lapeer Road to Glaspy in that short span. Is there any truth to that at all, or any planning for that? No? That would alleviate a ton of gravel train traffic for at least that small section of what I would kind of consider a residential street Oxford Lakes Drive, and that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'm Don Toll, I live at four-eighty Oxford Lakes Drive. Something that has to be considered is, like the gentleman said, there's probably over three hundred cars that whose subdivision people go in. Well, most of those kids, not all those kids will be going to the school, and most of those parents will be driving up Oxford Lakes Drive, drop them off at that fenced area where they can cross through the fence to go to the school. There would be three, over three hundred cars going up that street, you know, every day. That's going to present a big problem. That's all.
I'm Jeanne Pisson-Tene, I'm at four-seven-five Lakes Edge Drive. I agree with what Roy said with everything. Traffic's going to be atrocious. I know they're planning on putting a four-way stop, I think at Glaspy and Oxford Lake for that one part of the subdivision, and then they're going to put another exit entrance off of Drainer. I think a stop sign should be, if that's, this is going to go through, a stop sign should be put going west on Drainer for all those homes to stop, because coming east, you get all those tandem, you know, cement trucks and double tandem trucks with the gravel. If it could start getting backed up where people can't, they can't make a, they can't turn onto Oxford Lake to get to Glaspy, that's going to back up. And when I went to the township, yeah, the township here, I asked the gentleman at the building department, and he said that it's the Road Commission of Oakland County Road said we would have to contact them. Wouldn't that be something that's being done with this development, that people are going to have to, you know, that should be addressed? That's my thought.
Tom Bowlow under four-sixty, Lakes Edge Drive. Is there going to be an entrance on Oxford Drive from the sub? Yes?
Yes.
Well, we own, Oxford Lakes own ten feet all the way. How can that be?
There is a right-of-way, fifty-foot right-of-way.
They just take our property and that's it?
To be honest, I don't know that information. I'd have to look that up.
Pardon?
I don't have that information. That's something I'd have to research.
So there's going to be an exit or entrance on Oxford Drive from the sub?
Correct.
Well, how can they take our property without permission?
Again, that's something I'll have to research.
And how will we know? We maintain ten feet all the way on both sides of Oxford Drive, Oxford Lakes.
It's, it's something we'll have to look into, yes.
And when will we hear from you, or?
During the next meeting. We'll review all that with the afternoon.
I'm helping for a different reason, so I'm going to let everybody else finish.
My name's Don Parigen, twenty-five Lakes Edge Court, Oxford. I happen to live on Plots Lake. I don't know if you can honestly call it a lake. Myself, I call it more of a pond, but it's very nice out there, I won't, won't deny that. There are thirteen homes, I do believe, along that lake shore from Oxford Lake Drive all the way around to Lakes Edge Court, and they all tend to use that water to water their lawns. And I do believe part of Oxford Lakes Association also uses part of that water to water some of the common areas in Oxford Lake Association. Now, if they're going to build homes across on the other side of that lake, and they start all also drawing water out there to water their community areas and their personal lawns, I can assure you that Plots Lake will be dry within a number of years, and you'll have a nice little marsh there to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Gary Ledger, I live at five-twenty Lakes Edge Drive. Unfortunately, I mean, it's nice that they, what was, a year and a year and a half ago, they repaved M twenty-four and did all kinds of nice work, which, which we're glad they did, but the bad part for us that live in Oxford Lake is they put all kinds of signs up for people that didn't know how to go through our subdivision to bypass all the stuff, you know, where they were doing the work. So consequently, you've got boo-boo people that really didn't know they could get to our subdivision to get out of the other way. So we can't do anything about it now, what's done is done. But in the same comment that the gentleman made here about Plots Lake, I know this really doesn't have to do with this meeting, but I'm really concerned about Oxford Lake. If they do the work we're being told that they may do with the mining, that, you know, the gravel pit, that our, our lake is going to really suffer and go down. We're, we're very worried about that, so I'd like you to take consideration of that place. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Stone, four-six-four Sunset Boulevard in Oxford Lakes subdivision. I moved here from Keego Harbor, because I wanted to get away from places where houses are all built right on top of each other two years ago. I moved out here to Oxford because I wanted to get away from that. I love it here. I've been warmly welcomed by our community, I love the schools, and I want to know, why isn't the developer here tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question.
It feels like there's games being played when we, we hardly can find out about, you know, what's going on, and then we come to, you know, to ask questions to the developer, and they're not here. So why aren't they here?
There's, there was something with that, but it was just a request to reschedule, and, and we complied with that.
Okay. And has there been an environmental study done by the township for this project? Not by the developer, by the township? Has there been an environmental study done?
I'll have to look into that, to be honest with you.
It, it needs to be done because of everything Roy just said. How's there been a traffic study done?
Yes.
And what was, does it bear out what we've already heard? It's on the internet? Okay. Well, anyway, I disagree with everything you said. That's why I moved out here. I really love Oxford, and let's, let's keep it a place that's, that respects nature, and, and let's not destroy the lakes and the environment.
My name is Rhonda Danny. I live at five-nine-seven Bay Point Drive. I just, first off, want to say that I think it's a little inappropriate that this is happening on spring break, because other than the young gentleman in the back, I think I'm the youngest person here, because a lot of us have young kids, and a lot of the young parents who are really impacted by the school can't be here. So I just think that it's a little inconvenient time to have this meeting. My first question is, is this a shoo-in? Like, is this happening without a lot of this really having an effect?
Nothing's a shoo-in, no.
Okay, that's great. I, I agree with a lot of what's been said about environmental study, traffic impact, is, was, with that done, and I'm so glad you brought up the point about the internet, because I went to the internet and researched a lot of things, including a lot of articles that were done by supervisor Jack Curtis, which are more than available on the internet. Here's a thing. And there's a lot of talk about things just getting rushed through, like developers coming in and saying, he says to them, when do you want something to be done? Is it ninety days? Because you can come into our office and we'll get it done in that time. So I guess that's one of my big questions, is did a developer come in and say, I want this project done on this day? When can we make that happen? Because he quotes here that they can do that. So like, when Culvers went in Oxford, the developer almost backed out and said, it's going to cost, M dot said it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars for you to put a deceleration lane in, and Culvers said, you know, we're going to have to pull out, we don't have the allocation for that, and supervisor Curtis said, okay, I'm going to go to John Riley, and he went up all the way the chain of command and landed at John Riley, and he said, no, and they put it in. They put in Culvers without the deceleration lane, which I'm sure anyone who's gone to Culvers knows that's not there, and they just superseded M dot, who said this is what you have to have, and they just made it happen. So I guess one of my big questions is like, is this just going to happen if the environmental study doesn't pan out? If the traffic surveys aren't panning out, is this something that's just going to happen? Because you have a supervisor who says, we will make things happen. So if all these concerns are not being heard, I think that's a very large concern of mine. That also happened when McDonald's moved across the street. He also quotes that in this article. You know, that when someone wants to make something happen, it's going to happen and he'll make sure of it. He wants to develop Oxford, which I don't have a problem with. I think development needs to happen. He also, to his credit, talks about that you can't stop development. I mean, a lot of us are here because of subdivisions that have been recently developed. That's great. We want to live in this community, but there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be built out before a lot of building can happen, a lot more people can come in, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of older homes here, too. There's a lot- There's a lot of, he talks about that, there's a lot of subject lines that aren't built out for future yet. There's a lot of traffic, it's not allocated for so many more cars to happen. Like, what are those steps that need to be taken before you're building a subdivision on top of another? And I, I don't think it has been fully thought out yet. I mean, there's some answers that you guys don't have. I don't think that's a detriment to you, but I don't think it's fully prepared yet enough for this subdivision to be built on top of another one. That it's just, it's not ready yet. And he even talked about, we have forest country, we have other places to build. Why aren't we even going to some of those other areas yet? And the last point I wanna say is that corner of M twenty-four and Drainer, my sister was one of those cars to the many, many, many traffic instances, and I watched her get cried out of the T-bone at fifty-five miles an hour. She couldn't walk for four months barely. Like, she was a shell of herself, bruised from head to toe. That corner needs to be rebuilt before we start putting more cars on it. I mean, there's constant traffic accidents. The nurses pulled her out. She lost a family member on that corner. It's something that I think needs to be addressed before we're covering it with more cars in the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Careman, Mr. Commissioner, member. Thanks for this opportunity. My name's Larry Oldrick. I live at five four five Lakes Edge Drive. Couple of questions. Sounds like the developer has not given to this commission an environmental study for you to review yet. Is that correct? An environmental study would have to be done.
I believe it's in the packet, yes.
It is in the packet, so you have it. Can we get it? Can I get a copy of it?
I believe it's on the, the website.
Oh, it's on the website.
The same, the same packet that we get is on the website.
Is on the website. I didn't know that. Excuse me. Thank you. My understanding is that the request is, this is a PUD, and as we all know, PUD somewhat favors a developer because he has the opportunity to come back before this commission if he runs into some financial or unforeseen difficulties and make a request for a change. Well, that can be dangerous, all right? So one of the requests that I would have would be, once you lock him in to whatever this commission decides ultimately, that you maintain that, that we don't have to continue to follow this up for changes that would affect traffic or any of the other issues that these, these good folks have brought to your attention. The other issue is, when, when you get there or take a look at, and I'll look at it as well, the environmental package, that'll include some traffic issues. And keep in mind that we're just talking about this one subdivision of a hundred and sixty units, roughly. Well, there's additional things on the table for additional construction further down Drainer. And so when we look at traffic and we look at road changes and we look at traffic signals or whatever we're looking at, we need to look at the bigger picture. And that responsibility this commission can shift to this developer through the planning and make a demand based on some potential. Now, I'm not talking Drainer all the way to Rochester Road, but I am talking beyond where those vacant properties or, or seemingly vacant properties have been repurchased by other developers. So if, if you would keep us in mind when you look at that, and I'm sure you will, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's James Deutsch. I live at twelve eighty-eight Shepherd's Lane, further down Drainer, for those who don't know where that is. I'm here to talk about the Sanctuary Hills development, which is the Clearview property, which is part of this whole thing in a way. That was approved under the open space preservation option, and for those of you that don't know what that means, it means that they need to essentially keep half of the total building site as it is, or I should say, preserved as it's written. That means it has to be either uncleared areas left in natural condition, landscaped green belts, parks with recreation amenities, or stormwater usage. Now, they've been clearing that property for some time now, and when I approached the tree clearing contractors from Clearview, they informed my wife and I that they had permission from the township to clear the entire property, a hundred plus acres. Obviously, this does not match the open space preservation option that this was approved under. I requested the details from the township to confirm exactly how Clearview is going to comply with this open space preservation option. With given a handful of delays from the township, I finally received the approved plans this morning, and the plans do state that they have, that a plan, they do intend to have fifty percent of it accounted for, but it doesn't provide details on how they intend to do that. I can tell you a certainty, because I live right behind it, that they are mercilessly clearing every inch of that property that they are able to. If you have driven down Drainer, it looks like a war zone. The clear-cutting approach results in the following issues and concerns. It's completely ruined natural habitat in established forests, destroyed and devastated the homes and wildlife, it's reduced the property value of everybody that lives around it, it's increased the likelihood of erosion on the property because you removed all these trees and you're changing the topography, and it's also limited natural wind and sound barriers provided by the forest. The point is this, these developers have no stake in our community.
Right.
They are, they're here to clear cut trees, quickly put up neighborhoods, and leave with their money. Who is left with the outcomes of this approach for years to come? Us.
Right.
We owe them nothing, but they do owe us thoughtful development with minimal lasting impact. It's not our job to make their work easier, to allow them to cut corners. It's our job as a community to preserve and maintain and hold them accountable. Tomorrow, I'm gonna submit to the township an application for amendment to the zoning ordinance to include a tree and woodland protection section, one which closely mirrors what is already implemented in Lake Orion, but with additional provisions to make sure this doesn't continue to happen. I strongly urge the planning commission to hold off on approving any further developments until these protections are reviewed and adopted. We are obligated to preserve Oxford and all the features that led residents to choose Oxford as their home. Otherwise, we destroy the natural beauty with a short-sighted approach. All that will be left is an overdeveloped, clear-cut community that is indistinguishable from all the suburbs that us folks moved to Oxford to escape.
Yep.
My name is Kathy Wallen, forty-two Spring Lake Drive. I was out of town and I just drove down Drainer yesterday. When people say it's a war zone, it truly is a war zone there. Have any of you been down, driven down there to see what's going on down there? None of you have driven down, okay? Has your inspectors been down to check what's going on? I think you should go out there, check what's going on, and see how you're destroying our property. Thank you.
Yes.
Again, my name is Gary Ledger, five twenty Lakes Edge Drive. To me, if I was the builder of this thing they wanna do, and they actually cared what we think, they're not here. So it's pretty obvious they really don't give a damn what we think.
No, but I bet they're gonna watch this video.
That's why they're not here.
Let's, let's keep everything coming up here. No, let's keep the comments directed up here.
Okay. Anyway, now I lost my thought. I guess I made my point.
Right, right. They're not gonna watch.
Mark Reet Little at four twenty-two Thornhill Trail. I'm wondering if the revenue that you collect from the seven or more marijuana shops could be directed for purchasing parks and green space in Oxford. That would be nice and maybe that parcel of property on the corner of Glaspie and Drainer. In Macomb County, when a developer comes in, all trees that are six inches in diameter and larger are earmarked and they cannot cut those trees and, and the property cannot be clear-cut. And the last thing I wanted to mention is Drainer Road was constructed and is unsafe for developments of that size and magnitude. It has some dangerous curves. It needs to be straightened with a low bridge. It, it has blind areas. It wasn't designed for that kind of development at all on there. It just, it's just completely unsafe. And that's all I wanted to say.
Roy Giller, eight three five Whitley Way, Oxford. I just wanted the council to know that I have a disc that has video, overhead video, walk video, picture shows, and stuff like that. I have about seven different ones. I spent four days out there walking that way and, and flying my drone over it. You are welcome to view those. They're on Oxford subdivision website, but I can also supply you with that, copies of those myself. They would have to be on disc because it's quite, they're quite big.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jan Pisantini, four seven five Lakes Edge Drive. I just have one question. I heard also a rumor that the Oxford Golf Course was gonna go up for sale and also gonna be changed into more homes? Do you have any information on that?
I don't have any information to share on that right now.
To share?
I don't have any information.
Okay. I just wanted, 'cause I, I heard that and I thought more traffic.
Happy to be the president of the Oxford Lakes Association, but I think I'm that because I just said no less. Sometimes, anyway. I'd like to let you know that we currently spend about thirty thousand dollars a year budgeting for, in our association, budgeting for improvement on those lakes and controlling that runoff, controlling the chemicals that go into it and so forth. If we add more homes, it's gonna exponentially increase on that. Also, the, I wanna reiterate a lot of what Roy said, but I won't. I just am supportive regarding that. I guess my biggest concern would be currently the traffic. The traffic, three hundred and twenty-eight new cars, assuming there's two cars per home, two cars for door, is gonna put way too much in that. And then one that hasn't been mentioned so far is, there's gonna be a lot of new children in the area. Not only does that make pedestrian problems without sidewalks up and down or to get to that school, but also adding to the schools, the weight on the schools, the teachers and everything that's gonna go along with that. So it needs to come into consideration when you're looking at this stuff regarding that. I guess lastly would be, how do we get notification when the next meeting will be, when the Clearview Homes will be here?
I believe that's scheduled for April twenty-fifth.
You should, you should give it a notification.
Yeah, but it's on, you'll get a notification.
Well, the packets that you sent out were only sent out to the people that border Plots Lake. If you could, I represent the Oxford Lakes Association, and if you could get one to me, I can share it on our website. It's a closed website. You have to be a member of Oxford Lakes Association in order to be in on that website, but I could, I could share it with the remainder of the group.
Sure. And they are public, they're, they're put on the website.
We'll, we'll make sure you get it.
Yeah, we'll make sure you get it, Kathy.
I am Lori Orlando, two oh five Willow Lake Drive. Not directly affected by the development that everybody's talking about. However, I can, I just wanted to say that we've had a lot of experience with Clearview Homes in our subdivision. They do not care about the lakes, people. They have not followed proper silting procedures, they've had excessive runoff that has caused our association a good amount of money to dredge the narrow part of the lake that we are responsible for at, at Willow Lake. And so I wouldn't expect that they would suddenly change and take better care of these lakes that everybody here is concerned about. And so I would ask that, moving forward with this project, that you take very seriously the impact on the environment and the changes that it would bring to this community.
Right.
Richard Bastian, four ninety Lakes Edge Drive. I, I have, well, I would like to thank you first for, for doing your work. You only see me when I wanna complain, so I wanna thank you for the work you do. Everybody brought some good concerns. I'm not sure if this was brought up, but one, one thing that, I'm in the association and we have a, what we refer to as a public beach. It's, it's our public beach, private to the association. And over the years, we've had some issues with people coming from the trailer park. And we can only imagine that having a neighborhood of a hundred and sixty homes right around the corner would create a much, much greater problem. So that is one concern. At one point, the association tried to use wristbands to try to control the beach, and I remember when we started enforcing it, that same week or so, all our mailboxes were destroyed with doors ripped off and so on. So there was retribution for trying to control access to the lake. So clearly, there, there was gonna be, they're gonna take it for granted. As a matter of fact, when, I'm not sure if it's still there, but years ago, I remember going in, in the Trailer Parks Association website, and they were showing our beach as a benefit to living in their neighborhood. So I'm sure that this will also be the case for this new neighborhood, which is a concern. The other concern is the traffic, like everybody talked about. I'm not sure if there is a plan to also have an exit on Drainer, but I think if ever there is a neighborhood there, that would be brilliant. For me, I, I'm not against progress. I think that whenever we bring more people, we develop our city. It, it brings wealth to, to, to the, it helps to, to pay for taxes and so on. I'm not against having houses there, but considering that our area is growing, if you look on both sides of La Pier, going towards Bonniac, there's so much new constructions of, of industrial buildings, we can only imagine that this is gonna bring a lot of new people in the area. And I would think that we can do better than, I'm, I'm told it's condos or, or, I'm not sure if it's the lower value homes that are, are planned in this neighborhood. I, I would think that if we do develop that area, we should be able to bring nicer homes, considering that most likely these people will come to our lake and, and we won't have any ability to really control their access, right? So I, I would like you to take that into consideration. The other concern is our, our school district, I mean, the, the two schools in the area. Right now, we have a, I think what I consider a, a reasonable balance where we've got, you know, like lower-income people from the trailer park and some of our, the people from our close by neighborhood, which balances things out. Now, if we bring more people from a lower income into the neighborhood, those schools don't have great ratings, and, and I think it, it will impact those ratings. And that usually also impacts our property values. Usually, when people shop for a home, they put a lot of emphasis on being in good school districts. So I think that this is also something that would, would push us towards trying to bring in some higher quality homes in that development if we choose to do so. The other thing that I, I wanted to discuss is that we showed up tonight because we, this really matters to us, and, and we thought we were gonna have a vote tonight. So we showed up, even though it wasn't really well-publicized, but we did talk to each other and show up. Is there enough of us here tonight to have a quorum, to be able to vote on this tonight? Not wait for another meeting and another meeting where they postpone and they show up or don't show up? There's enough of us here that are against it, to, to have a motion and just vote against it right here, right now, and be done with this.
I would say no. We have a due diligence and we will go through reviewing everything to make sure things are done right for both the community, the developer, everybody. And I think it would only be fair to let the developer present what they have.
Do you think they're going to convince us?
So, no, the answer is there won't be a vote tonight.
So we're going to waste time again?
It won't be a waste of time, no.
Okay. Finally, this concludes what I wanted to say on this housing project. The other thing I wanted to discuss was, and this is something that has been in the back of my mind. It's been bothering me. I never really came to these meetings, but now that I'm here, I've noticed that per capita, I think we probably have the highest amount of marijuana shops in this town. And I'm not sure who of you are allowing this. But I'm really concerned because we need to be careful with our community. We've got right now the Salvation Army, we've got Goodwill, and then we've got Trailer Parks, I think there's two of them. And now we're trying to bring lower income homes. And then we've got all these weed shops. I mean, if you look at Gillisby, it's like Weed Alley. You know? I think there's a lot of activity in our neighborhood. We should have more pride than that. I mean, Oxford is a beautiful, quiet little town. We should have more pride than that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're in the village.
They're in the village, correct. The township, I believe, has three being built, I think approval for four. The remainder are in the village. You need to go to village council meetings because that's all controlled by them. And although at Glassby are controlled by them.
That's one of the things I was just going to say. Unfortunately, I feel like the village sold us out on that, you know? Like that one gentleman said, he moved here to get a little bit of country, spread out space, added to people, friendliness. And this is a bad deal for us, I think. But I know it doesn't have anything to do with you.
They have the oversight over the village.
Dan's excavating with the gravel pit across the street. Does the planning commission have any say on what they're doing in there? I know they've submitted a plan to this EGLE. I don't really know what that is.
State.
State?
It's a state.
And it sounds like a rubber stamp? Yeah, I'm thinking it's a rubber stamp. Thirty-three point something million gallons a day is what they want to use out of their lake to wash their gravel. They say it's all going to go back into their lake. I get that. But if you're going to wash that much gravel with that much water, there's going to be an evaporation effect that is serious. And, you know, I don't know if you guys can have any impact on that, but it's a consideration. You know, some people have told me that I'm all wet when I think that their lake is connected to our lake. I mean, physically above grade, no, but the aquifer is only 300 feet away.
Right, right.
And, you know, I've read some things. There was a deal in the Ann Arbor area where they shut them down because it was destroying the water supply. I don't want that to happen to us. I don't know if you guys have any input or if you care to check into it. Something we can look into. I'd appreciate that.
Well, I'm definitely not going to be a fan of theater here. Good afternoon, my name is CJ Walker. I live at 2185 East Lakeville Road, next to the gravel pit. I was unable to attend the master plan open house due to family obligation, but I'm hoping to ask the commission to changing the future development of my four parcels or 42 acres east of the Kone gravel pit from the current master plan at two and a half acre lots to half acre lots, one acre lots or multifamily use. I also own a 65 foot easement that would allow a residential road crossing over the Pollyam bike path, which is the only easement allowed as far as I'm aware of in the township. And would ask the township to indicate my ability to do so on the new master plan. I understand there may be concerns of traffic flow over the trail, but I'd like to remind the township, this is the same trail that crosses over the Kone gravel pits entrance that has hundreds of gravel trains pulling over it daily. I'm also aware of the gravel pits connection to the township's water source and would ask you to consider my adjacent properties to also be able to do so in the master plan. These four lots are the last four lots in the township heading east on Lakeville Road. I'm saying this to give an idea who this would affect in terms of neighboring properties within the township. The only adjacent properties are the Kone gravel pit, which is now owned or partially owned by DEI Properties, one of the biggest developers in the state. I can only assume it'll be years before they finish mining next door, seeing the new operation they've invested. But knowing who the investors are, I'll make another assumption that the property will be developed in the future. I've printed out an overhead view of my properties and attached the parcel numbers if you'd like them. I'd also indicate, I also included pictures of my survey showing the property lines and easement over the trail. Please consider my request for future development within our township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Justin Socia, over at 227 Oxford Lake Drive. I'm a newbie, just moved in about two years ago. We probably looked at over 60 homes, trying to find a home in different neighborhoods all around. And we ended up settling on Oxford. Despite the recent tragedy that happened, I have three kids of my own. And we fell in love with the neighborhood. We fell in love with our neighbors. We fell in love with the small town. Now, I've been coming to Oxford for years. Never thought about living here until I had a family. And much of what everyone has said tonight, the traffic, it sucks. I live right on Oxford Lake Drive, in between two stop signs that nobody stops at. I get up for work at 3:30 in the morning. I leave my house at 3:45, 4 o'clock in the morning. There are cars that are doing 80 miles an hour down our street. If this thing goes through with this developer, I would propose that they pay for sidewalks along Oxford Lake Drive. I would request that they pay for gates for our subdivision to limit that traffic from point A to point B to the people that live in the sub. It would also help limit the traffic of people dropping their kids off at the school, which is a great idea, but our roads are taking a beating for it. I've only been here for two years in that subdivision and I have seen the damage that it's done. You know, this gentleman talked about being fair. We all showed up tonight expecting to have a face to face with a developer. For whatever reason, he wasn't able to make it. Okay, fine. Next meeting when he's here. I assume that all of us will be here again, you know, to show our support for this. When it comes time to vote, I think there will be more people showing up. The lady in the back, she mentioned that this just so happens to happen on spring break when half of our subdivision may be out of town, you know, taking family vacations. So I would just expect twice as many people to show up next time, twice as many people to voice their opinions. And I would ask for compensation, like I said, at the minimum gates, to limit that traffic for us, keep our neighborhood safe or as safe as possible, you know? That's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Marlene Telby from 918 Baypoint Drive. The concern I have is compensation for access over the subdivision property on Oxford Lake Drive. Why wasn't that ever brought up? And who gives them the right to cross, to put a road in on the property that we own? We have a deed to that property. So how do they acquire that property without our permission in the first place? The road going from...
Placent to Glassby.
So it's Oxford Lake Drive that easement is ours.
It's something we'll have to look into. Honestly, I don't have an answer for it right now.
Would you please do that? Thank you.
Hey, I'm sorry. At Terrence, 327 Lake Drive, I'm sorry. But I just have one question. Somebody mentioned something about all of us being here for a vote. Am I, I'm under the impression that we don't really have a vote.
We don't.
All the developer has to do is convince the township planning commission. Is that correct? And the township planning commission is going to reap the benefit of much, much increased tax revenue? Is that correct?
Yeah.
The developer has to convince four of the seven members on this panel to get some level of approval. It still has to go to the board, to the commission, the board of trustees and the township to final approval. So we just make recommendations to them. The board has to do final approval, especially...
Plus, a vote of the community could, 20% can also cancel the project.
Fifty be it on the ballot.
This is going to happen. This subdivision is going to happen. It's a question of how it happens and what the density plan is, things like that. They've invested a crap load of money already with blueprints and, you know? It's going to happen. We're just concerned about how it impacts, or I am just concerned how it impacts our situation.
I've seen other projects been turned down before.
Charlie Stevens, 625 Lakeshore Drive, Oxford, Michigan. And I just want to, for the board's edification that I do support most all the comments that are made here. And I also agree with Ed that in all likelihood, this development is going to happen. What we can try to do is control the impact. And that's what we're here, trying to, I think, voice our opinions. Traffic is obviously an issue. I think anytime that the subdivision or when the developer comes, there should be a clear definition of how the traffic flow and the traffic studies that have been done and what can be done to alleviate those issues. The school impact was mentioned earlier. One of the things with our schools, last time they were talking about developing this development, I specifically asked them, what was their impact, school impact? They said they didn't do that study, it didn't concern them. And I don't know what to degree that the township will coordinate with the schools to try to figure that out, what the impact of the school would be. But I think that there should be some joint communication to figure that out and what schools would be impacted. In terms of the... In terms of the density issue, that is something that you can control. I don't know at this point, and I came here tonight really thinking that they were going to be here and it'd be more of an informational meeting that we'd be able to attain certain information. I don't know what that property is currently zoned. I know that some communities in our sub, I mean, in our community have lot size limits. And certainly would encourage the township not to allow for a lower density or a higher density, if you will, of homes going in there. So, for example, if it's two and a half acres is what it's currently zoned, I would offer or suggest to you that don't give them the right to put more houses on than what's currently allowed. I also think that when you, if you do do that, the next time another sub goes in, you're going to be faced with those restrictions or the things that you've already allowed in one area. So for example, if that golf course is developed into homes and you allow for smaller lot sizes in this little pocket, they're going to be able to go after that in the bigger, in the golf course area. And I do know that, I think there's a requirement for green spaces and certainly hold them accountable that there are legitimate green spaces available for the community that they're developing. And the, and also I'm assuming that the township has a master plan that would incorporate or look at this development or the lands within the township and what has currently been planned and looking at also that infrastructure, right? So how's water or sewer going to get into this community? What impacts is that going to have on the surrounding communities? And what's the cost to the residents that currently live here? So again, I would ask that you, you know, you require the developer to outline specifically what the school impact plan, a traffic impact plan, an environmental impact plan. And I'd encourage you, this board, not to allow for reduced lot sizes. And it just doesn't fit with our community. That's not why we're here. Probably all of you get moved here or lived here based on it being a more rural community. Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Arkles, 491 Thornhill Trail. I just want to say that I agree with so many of the points. People could not have said that any better. I wanted to add on to something that Charlie said that always concerns me when it comes to PUDs, is that precedence that it sets for the higher density. Especially to so many's point, people's points. Is our infrastructure really able to handle it even as it's currently zoned, scares me. So if the higher density, I just am afraid every time you allow it, developers are going to go after it again and again. And I get that, that's your business. But it does put a lot of strain on all of us. Second of all, I wanted to verify the process that we're going through today. So if the developer had showed up, this would be a preliminary public hearing, correct?
Correct.
In front of the planning commission? If you were to approve it, then goes to final? And that decision is made by planning commission or the township board?
Board. PC.
PC.
Okay. And then at what point after that does it go to the township board?
We make a recommendation to the township board to approve after final.
Or disapprove?
And they can disapprove at that time as well, even based on your recommendation if you were to make it to approve, correct? Okay, okay. The last thing that I'd like to say is, I know this is not the township's fault. I know it's the developer that pulled out. I, and I'm sure many other people, went through a lot of communications. I'm sure Cheryl probably dealt with a lot of communications on when these site plans were going to come in, once they came in, coming in, taking pictures of them. It's a lot of time and effort for us residents to do that. Is there any way that you could have someone to contact the people who have been interested, have been contacted? Because if we don't keep up on it, then we hear about it and there's a public hearing like two weeks later. And that's not enough time. And we try very hard. This gentleman right here went through so much work. I went through some work myself. And then when this happens, it's extremely discouraging.
Mr. Chair?
Chair.
The township website has the entire package. We have the same information that you have. That's where we got our information from for tonight's meeting. There are drawings on it, there are maps on it, a full package. There's all the approval processes that the candidate builder went through to get to this point. So it's all very transparent and it's found on the township website.
And that I understand.
It will be under the planning commission and it will be under today's date.
And that I understand. However, that's not really prepared at the same time that the site plans are submitted and available for the public. So you have the agenda packet. When I come into the township, I'm only able to get access, and maybe it's the way that I've asked or not asked correctly. I only get access to the site plans themselves. I don't get access to that agenda packet until I go to your website. And that's usually closer or closer to the public hearing as opposed to when the developer puts in the site plans. So if that could be something that could be coordinated, especially in the situation where people put a lot of time and work into this, I would really appreciate that.
It's something we can look at. Honestly, leaving it on the website is probably best because I can see somebody being forgotten to be notified and there being a problem. So it's easier to put it on the website and it's out there for everybody.
If nothing else, can we... If nothing else, can we, otherwise, I mean, I know the state does a fantastic job in doing the things for the social media, is there something that could be even on there, something to think about? I would just like to have this information, especially since we've been here twice, or it's been canceled twice already by the developer, to know, so we have more time to look at it. Some people didn't even have a chance to look at things until today.
It's something we can look at.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, I'm Ryan North, and I live at three two five Lakes Edge Drive. Wasn't going to say anything tonight, but in my hand, when we moved here, it was my understanding that the other side of Plough Lake, which I live on, my family lives on, part of the reason we moved here was for this community, was that that was a protected wetland. And according to Oakland County and the Department of Environmental Quality, part of that property, especially going up to the lake, is under the National Wetland Protected Inventory. And I know it was brought up very briefly this evening. But it really has not been touched on, and, you know, coming from the south and living in a highly developed area now, where thirty-five families a day were moving into the greater Charleston, South Carolina area, I can assure you that the mayor and a lot of those on the planning commission who voted for it, who I know personally regret the decisions that they made, because they can no longer go back and take back that development that has ruined that landscape. I guess I would just encourage, maybe for the next meeting, if it's not canceled, that the planners, or the state, or somebody provides some form of information as to that protected wetlands, and how it can be developed, and how that develop may be able to come as close and far up to the water as it does. Because, again, coming from an area that is surrounded by protected wetlands, it's always been my understanding that those wetlands are nationally protected and cannot be developed. Whether it's represented from the state, or from Wildlife Division, somebody that says that it's okay for us to be developing on this wetland up to the water. And that's all I've got this evening, thank you, gentlemen.
One last one, I promise. James Deutsch again, twelve eighty-eight Shepherd's Lane. I just want to say a couple of things about, you know, it's, people started talking like it's a foregone conclusion, this is happening, and I'm not okay with that, because it shouldn't be a foregone conclusion, otherwise we're all wasting our time, and it's a slap in our face that we spent our time preparing and thinking about all this. So it absolutely shouldn't be a foregone conclusion, you should take our concerns seriously. And to be completely honest with you, the fact that none of you have traveled down Drainer to see what's going on after you approve something that's devastating an entire hundred-plus acres, is kind of disappointing, and doesn't really give me a lot of confidence that there is, first of all, a lot of thought going into this, as if it was your own backyard. So everything that you approve, you should go see what it looks like in perspective of somebody that lives right next to that development. And you should imagine yourself and your family living there. And then you should look at it and say, is this something that I would be happy with? And what are my concerns if I lived right there?
Right.
Because that's what we all have to deal with. And so if only four out of seven of you have to be convinced, two million dollars a year property tax is pretty convincing. So, there needs to be putting yourself in the shoes of the people that have to live with this and deal with it. Don't be short-sighted, take accountability, and look at what you're doing, and hold the developers accountable, and make sure this doesn't keep happening.
My name is Andy Murdock, I live at five eight five Tulamore Circle. I used to live in Oxford Lakes for seventeen years, and I moved a year ago. So, I understand all their concerns, all the traffic and everything, because I've dealt with it too. I moved to Tulamore Circle, forty-nine homes. It was partially developed when I got it, but I back up to Tulamore Lake, and that's my beautiful background. We see eagles almost every other day, they land in the trees. And the question that I had for the developer is, it says on the planners, an easement that's supposed to be like twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet around the lake. Are they going to, is easement going to stay there and they're going to take all the trees out, like they did? Over there, because that's devastating. I mean, I took my dog for a walk there, and it's just, it's sad. We should be protecting Oxford, that's beautiful. And if we just wipe everything out, I mean, I moved into a new sub, which is, which is, it's great, but I had a six hundred dollar tree fee to plant all the tiny tree. We're taking out big, huge trees, they're mature, why? And it's just, one of the neighbors that backed up that development, they had some great pine trees, and they asked the guy that was taking them out, can you just leave them? He said, no, we're told to take every tree, every tree. And it's just, it's sad, and we live off Drainer, or we back up to it. And when the gravel haulers go down there, the big trucks are taking all those trees out, my house shakes. It's a brand-new house, it shakes, because the infrastructure is not there. We need to have a better road, or something that can handle those trucks. You're going to have all these cement trucks going down there, and it's horrible. And let alone getting down in twenty-four, I went out at six thirty this morning, it took me five minutes to get through the line. Usually it's not bad, but then you add two hundred and fifty houses or two hundred and fifty cars, that's good, I haven't looked at it. And Oxford needs to stay beautiful. And you can develop it, but keep the trees that's here and have smaller impact. That's all I got to say.
Hello, my name's Jan Perrigen, I live at twenty-five Lakes Edge Court. I moved here about twenty-four years ago, my husband and I. And I remember going down Drainer Road and seeing all these signs that say, "Natural Beautiful Beauty Road." And now where's the beauty? Are they going to take those signs down? Because if they go on with this development, I think all those signs need to come down, because they're not beautiful anymore. And it's pretty sad, to know that we're doing this to our beautiful roads in town. That's all.
You going up, Gary?
Yeah. Gary Lutcher again, Oxford Lake subdivision. In a way, I have to really look at this and say, some of this is our fault. And the reason I'm saying that, and I have to admit, I don't go to township meetings. I'm retired, there's no reason that I should take that time.
Here's, talk to the mic. Talk to the mic. Here, here, here. Can you talk into the mic and talk to this board?
Quite frankly, I really believe if even half of the people in this room, if we could take time in the beginning to go, when they, these people come to you and talk about plans that they want to do, if we had more of a turnout and go to the meetings, just possibly, maybe, we could get in, in the beginning, when they're talking about it. Because like now, it's too late. I mean, they're listening to everything they say, and they're just, you know, I get it. I'm sure they're not happy with it either, but that's, if we don't do more planning on our part and go to the meetings, and I'm going to start going, I admit it, I'm at fault.
If you listen to us, it's not too late.
If you don't go to the meetings and try to get into the beginning when they talk about this stuff, to me, you don't have a chance of stopping it. So, I hope I learned something, thanks.
Mike Kozloff, I'm the developer of Oxford Lakes, I live at nine twenty-six. And I am putting up with a tremendous amount of traffic already. It's going to get a lot worse. But a bigger issue is, the association and I have a deed to that property with all the pine trees going down Oxford Lake Drive. You've gone on here, if you looked at this, you want to exit on Glassbeak on Oxford Lake Drive. You know what a problem that's going to be? Are you going to buy that property from us? We've maintained it for thirty years. Thirty years we've maintained paying people to take care of that. Have you even considered that? Obviously not, none of you can answer me.
We're not the ones buying the property, the developers, we don't have.
You've got to look at this stuff and see what's going on.
We're looking at it, and we have to evaluate everything that's put in front of it.
I met with Jack Curtis six months ago, he said that road is going in no matter what.
That's an issue you can talk about with Jack.
It's like talking to this wall.
Anybody else? Okay.
No more.
Okay, we got one more.
I'm Paul Broner, I live at four nine five East Drainer. And I'm the only, the only home on Tulamore Lake right now. And I have a few issues that haven't been brought to light. One would be that the drain system is a pressurized drain system. It's only like a nine-inch pipe that they put in several years ago. And I'm just concerned that it's not going to handle all this extra volume. And also, the water, the pressurized water system is probably not adequate either. And those are two considerations. I'd also like to bring to light that I, if they're going to go with underground utilities through this, I suggest they run utilities all the way to Camp Oakland, from LaPire to Camp Oakland, because from Camp Oakland on, it's already underground utilities. And also that they pave that section, at least to Camp Oakland. I think that's. I agree with the density problems, I don't think we should bend on density rules. I think we should keep the density as is required. And we are concerned about trees being cut down. I think that's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, that's from four nine the Lakes Edge. I was just wondering, based on all of the folks that came up here, there doesn't seem to have been a lot of studies that were done prior to this builder going ahead and just clearing the land and doing. It almost seems like it's a foregone conclusion, based on some comments that were made. It could be that just one environmental study could pretty much kill this project. So, I'm not sure, for the next meeting, is it possible to have those studies done such that we know, you know, we know if it's even feasible or not? Because we're coming to debate this, and I'm very surprised to learn that we don't have a say, only four of you need to decide if it's going to be happening. Anyways, to those four of you that, I get the impression have already decided, I would like to say that in your consideration, could you at least request that these are single horns with decent-sized lots? And that it blends in with our beautiful neighborhoods, such that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb? Because that's the entrance to our neighborhood, we don't want to have a bad neighborhood there. So I think that this should be at least your very least consideration, if you do decide to go ahead with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing nobody else, we will move on to number eight, commissioners' comments. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, first off, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight, I appreciate all the comments. And nothing is a foregone conclusion. It has to go through multiple steps of organizing, approved, you guys will get more than one opportunity to speak. More than one opportunity. And it's always good to have a room full like this, so that we get a better understanding of what the surrounding community believes. We all have slightly different opinions up here, from what I understand, based on experience of working with these gentlemen over the past decade, for many of them. Some are brand-new, but we'll get to know them too. But again, nothing is a foregone conclusion, nothing. And for today, this is only public comment, so you may be asking yourself, why aren't we communicating back and forth? Because normally during public comment, it's your chance to speak to us, we normally don't get into a conversation back and forth. Right? So, but when we have a public hearing, that's when that stuff happens. And this was supposed to be a public hearing, and I'm as disappointed as some of you are that the developer decided to cancel for a second time this time around, so we don't get a chance to. This is the second time. So we don't get a chance to go back and forth either, you know, we have plans in our packet, but we have a lot of questions. We have a lot of professionals, we pay as a township to look at some of that before we even see it, to go through it and dot some i's, cross some t's, and make sure that they're meeting our ordinances, and that a lot of that was done. And that's when we see it, so a lot of times, we don't see the packet until you guys see the packet. Right, yeah, our professionals, and our planners, and our engineering teams, and our attorneys, and the fire department, all see it ahead of that, because they ought to put comments in there. But when that's all done, we get to see it. So, it's sometimes hard to give you an advance warning, because they get a lot of preliminary plans that come in here that go nowhere. Right, because it doesn't make sense for the developer, because they can't toss it out, for example. So this one, yeah, we've seen it in our packet a couple of times, but we still haven't had an opportunity, the seven of us, the four of us tonight, to really ask a lot of those questions to the developer either. So we all have a lot of questions, so. When this happens again, unfortunately, hopefully you guys can all come back out, ask your questions again, they all took some copious notes, I hope. I know our planners did, and they have some copious notes for some of the questions that will definitely get answered. And hopefully we'll have a lot more information the next time this happens, so again, thank you for coming on.
I just want to say thank you everybody for being here tonight. Appreciate the input from the public, so thank you.
Thanks for your work.
On my count, there were thirty-four of you that came up and talked to us. Last one was Mr. Broner, appreciate those comments. This is a seven-member board, there are four here tonight. There are normally seven people, or upwards of seven at the most. So, all seven of those people have an equal opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, who will come forth with this PUD. It's not a foregone conclusion that this decision is made on this. The final decision will rest with the township board. The planning commission board will make a recommendation to the township board for a decision. I happen to sit on the water sewer committee. We have discussed this particular development. We don't know any firm details in regards to this, but yes, we do have questions about water, we do have questions about how the sewer will work. I do know about the easement on Oxford Lake Drive, I don't know where it starts to stop, if there's an opening across from Glassbeak, but that will have to be answered, with a firm answer for the developer. So a lot of the points that you brought up about the tree cutting, I have been on Drainer Road, we weren't here tonight to have interaction with you folks, but I have driven all the way down to the new Tulamore, I've driven all the way down to the end of Drainer where it meets Lakeville, the road, and driven back, and there is a lot of changes on the horizon on Drainer Road right now. We, at the township, including myself, is very concerned about the M twenty-four and Drainer Road intersection there. I happen to sit on the steering committee for the new master plan, and there is not a topic that doesn't come up about the traffics in the township, about the density in the township, and how we can best manage that with all the resources that we have up to, including. One lady at our open house talked about, do we have enough school bus drivers? Well, I thought that was very kind of her to go down to that level. But that's how far we're going down to it, to think about some of these new developments in this tightly knit area, M twenty-four and Drainer. I'm sorry tonight that the builder wasn't here, the developer wasn't here to hear your voices. I encourage you to come back for the next meeting, I think that's going to be on the. April twenty-fifth. I'd like to hear, he needs to hear that, and the rest of his board needs to hear that, as well as a letter to the township would help. But the more information we get, the better response we can give you as citizens. Thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, again, thank you for everybody that came out. Please know that your voices are heard, that's why we ask for these meetings. Please know, nothing is just a done decision, we do value that, that's why we ask for this. And it is our job to. And it is our job to make sure that if developments do go in like this, that they're done right. So, you know, again, we do value that feedback. Please know we heard every one of you and do value that. So thank you.
Can the developer get a copy of this, so he can hear all of our...
I believe it's being broadcast live.
Then you should just say developer can't do it. If they're not interested in coming here.
Mission to be here at the next meeting? No?
I know one that will not be, and if we need to make a... We'll look at all that.
Okay. Thank you. Do you assume the meeting? No?
We're going to take about a two-minute break, if anybody needs to...
If you guys are all bored and want to sit and listen to master plan, please sit around.
Yes, I do thank you.
See in the back.
Hey, the good thing is, if my property don't exist, then nobody else's in the township, but they grab them.
Because they keep painting, less people show up, and less people show up.
I'm wondering, do they limit, do they say, okay, you don't show up to three times, four times?
I don't know if there's any process to that.
Nothing's so named.
But it's always harder to get people to show up.
For the township, yeah.
It is the Oxford Lakes.
For the township, yes. But the thing that you want to understand about this challenge, actually, is that once that ordinance...
The villages allow it, the villages allow it, so they can do as many as they want.
No. No, 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 they're all single-family, they're all, they're all, they're single-family attached homes, and duplexes, threeplexes, with their own individual door and driveway, or, right, or they're in, or they're single-family, it could be single-family attached homes.
It's been a while since I've been through this process. I brought in this one.
So if you don't ask for that information, it actually, the commission should consider that.
I know, thank you.
I know, you're welcome to ask the question of the developer, but as a planner, I think you can discuss that. I would advise that you push in, you know, tell them to take that in.
I'm sure you should give everything that much to the township. You can't just put under there a check.
I would love to, I would send something to you.
That would be great for us to be able to find.
So there still is a lot of time to spend. There still is a lot of time to edit some of the...
My turn.
Start back up in two minutes.
And make sure that with the new motion now, now I remember the premises, now the lead design.
Now the foundation, we do not, that's the other issue.
Yeah, the formulary, the, 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 the formulary, which is not happening, that ends up... Sorry, I just got a question. Ultimately, I'm just trying to be in sorts. However, the, the, I'm a planning consultant, so I have a recommendation to do that. That's why I think it's so important, stressing, yeah, we have to. My heart goes out to that future, I can't serve the people. And at the time, the ordinance, they greatly, they actively...
I pushed him to come back soon.
Okay, so we have concluded number eight. We are skipping number nine. We are moving down to number ten, unfinished business. Okay. It's all you, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Teo Paslakwab, Carlo Wartman Associates. We are the Township Planning Consultants. And so tonight, what we have for you is a good chunk of information and important parts of the master plan update. I know that the packet for this evening, at least for the anticipated conversation we're going to have, was quite large. So there was a lot of information there that relates to the survey that wrapped up, closed in mid-February. And we provided an analysis for some of the, for all of the responses that came in, with a total of eight hundred and fourteen online responses. And then also, a synopsis of the comments and the feedback that we received from the community event that was earlier this month on a Sunday at the Legacy Center. So again, there was a lot of information there. You know, kind of what we wanted to work through in the first portion of tonight's agenda was what your take was on that information. You know, obviously, again, if there were complications in viewing any of it, there'll be more than enough chances to provide us feedback on what you saw there. But if there were any kind of prominent themes, or, you know, larger emphasis of information that you wanted to give back to us. Before we dive into that, I just would see if there's any questions as it relates to the timeline that we provided with completed tasks, current tasks and upcoming. I think at this point, we're still on track for final approval sometime between July and October. You know, again, depending on how a few sections are drafted, and again, feedback is a release to that. Any concerns with the timeline?
I didn't see any, no.
Okay. So then back to just kind of the feedback from the survey. We, I've got some kind of bird's-eye view results that we can kind of put in front of you guys. But if you have any, you know, any immediate feedback that you'd like to give us, you know, we're more than ready to take notes.
If you don't, if I can ask? Absolutely. I'm just curious, you know, hot topics seem to be density and traffic. From the surveys that you've got so far, how could you summarize that for us, those hot topics?
Sure. So let me kind of give you the bullet points that we were kind of able to take from kind of an initial review of the information. So some of the big picture stuff is that you kind of had an even balance between when the question was asked, whether you have enough residential, should you have more, should you have less? There was kind of an even feedback from that you have too much, or that you have just enough. And so, kind of reflective in some of the comments from tonight, you know, from a residential perspective, there seems to be a majority sentiment that you either have what you need, or you have more than what you need. There was a pretty strong consensus for more retail. You know, different varieties of shops, stores, places to kind of, they can provide local goods and necessities as opposed to traveling to other communities. More recreation, you know, broad statement, whether that be in township parks, or, you know, again, just natural areas for people to have passive recreation in. More and safer non-motorized transit. A lot of feedback on trails, safety paths, sidewalks. But not just, not just from the perspective of recreation, from the perspective of connection, being able to walk to something. You know, kind of having a trip in mind. Improving of automotive traffic, a common theme again heard tonight with, you know, the focus primarily being on M-24 and the different traffic challenges that face that corridor, but then also the east and west. You know, again, you're very limited on what those options can be. And then another interesting, I guess, statistic that came out of it was that only fifteen percent of respondents thought that you had too much industrial, which I'm not going to say that means eighty-five percent means that they're open-ended to it. But as we talk about infrastructure, and we talk about, you know, I think eighty-seven percent of your land use is dedicated to residential, there seems to be an open-mindedness to the diversification of your land uses. So those were kind of our quick take, big-picture feedback from the survey and from the community event. And in your packet, we included all the boards that came from the community event, which provides some good feedback on areas of the community in which I think people were interested in preserving in their natural state, not natural state, in their current state, either be current state or current zoning. And there were some areas that the community would be open to further development and things of that nature. But that was...
Let me tell you, I have just a couple of problems. So density, I just want to focus on density for a second, because it's such a hot topic.
Sure.
You know, the information we have talks about square footage of lot size, and it kind of steps up through a series of different lot sizes. And can you give us some information about how the surveys came back? And what the township residents want to do in the future? So as we take that information in and update the master plan, we have those thoughts in mind.
Sure. There seemed to be a fair consensus that, you know, you have what you have. As far as what you do in the future, there seemed to be a preference more towards the larger lot sizes in kind of a reduction in density for the areas still to be developed. Okay.
Goodbye, I just, sorry to interrupt you. Can you expand on that? I'm not sure that we here understand what each of our lot sizes are.
Sure.
And the two, I think that you're speaking of, which are smaller lot sizes, are the ones that I think the least somebody supported? Because they want them at one acre, two and a half acre, five acre plus.
Correct.
So if you can kind of expand it, just so everybody knows exactly what our differences are on lot size.
So I'm going to talk to them, so the mic catches me, but I'm answering the question. Yeah, so your zoning is set up in, your guys' zoning is set up, and even your future land use is set up as far as minimum lot sizes. And so for most residential, most of your residential designations refer to single-family housing. So if the minimum lot size is twenty-five thousand square feet, you can put one unit on twenty-five thousand square feet, one acre, two and a half acres, twenty acres. I think your current zoning steps from twenty-acre minimum to ten-acre minimum to five to two and a half to twenty-five thousand square feet, and then all the way down to like nine thousand, I think R1A, or six thousand square feet. So six thousand square foot lot, one unit. And so that is, that's both kind of the way that your zoning is set up. That's the way that your current future land use map is set up. So, and you have, so there was a... So kind of, so one of the questions had asked in the survey, and thank you, Megan, for handing it over to me, is that how would you describe, or where should single-family homes kind of be allowed from a lot size? And what we found was that any, the response of allowing them anywhere in Oxford Township was very popular for the twenty-acre minimum lots, right? Saying that you can put those anywhere you want, because that's kind of what the community is desiring. And it's, how many people are open to those lot sizes being anywhere? As the lot sizes get smaller, the response becomes less and less anywhere in the township, and shifts more towards only where currently allowed, or no additional houses of this type. So as you get smaller lots, they basically get less popular, from the survey respondents.
Did it give you an idea of what size they prefer?
Well, again, so twenty-acre lots was the most popular, two and a half to ten was next, twenty-five thousand square foot was after that. And then when you hit one acre, the anywhere in Oxford goes, you know, it dips down to fifteen percent approval. Twelve thousand square feet was eleven percent, six thousand square feet was eleven percent. So it narrows. It's pretty much an upside-down pyramid. I mean, as you start to get to the lower densities, the popularity goes down.
Sure.
The smallest two acreage, can you give a, if it was a square, can you give us a lot size for it?
I'm sorry, can you ask the dimensions here?
The small, two dimensions of the smallest two lot sizes for our conversation. You call out twelve thousand square feet, and you call out six?
Correct.
What's the dimensions of a six thousand square foot? On the average, I understand.
Yeah, sixty by a hundred for six thousand square feet.
Then the next size up?
You're killing me, John. Let's just go with a hundred and twenty feet by a hundred.
Okay. I'm just saying that the residents here, they're going to picture it in their mind of what their lot sizes are. And we're talking square foot.
Let me, I tell you what, I'm not going to, I won't jump ahead, but...
I mean, just kind of putting things into perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
What is a lot, like, over in Lake's Edge Drive?
Right. So I've got that kind of teed up for a different part of the conversation, but let's just do it now. So, you know, anywhere from like a six thousand up to a twelve thousand, maybe nine thousand square foot lot, are similar to the current Tullamore development. When you start looking at twenty-five thousand square foot lots, all the way up to forty thousand, fifty thousand square foot lots, the Indianwood Sub on the southern part of Drainer.
Okay.
When we look at... Give me a second here. I mean, I've got some of the multifamily statistics, but I don't think that's necessarily what we're discussing right now.
How many square feet do you...
I'm sorry.
I know that.
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand square feet per acre.
Correct, correct. A little bit, a little bit more than, but... Yeah. So again, so that's, you know, most of the Waterstone development is under the R1A, which is the six thousand square foot lots. So the Westlake development, those are mostly six thousand square foot lots.
Not the reason I put you on the spot and Megan ran out of the room, but we have to put it in our own minds, to see what...
No, completely, fair for context. So, yeah, so again, those are, those are kind of the broad themes that are coming back from the survey and the community event. Again, I know there was a lot of information for tonight. Tonight won't be the only time for you guys to dive deep into, I think it was, a lot of pages of information that you can kind of provide us feedback on. But those were our broad observations.
Teo, is this packet available on the website with the other information? So how everybody here could access this, the same information, they could see the preliminary results, or the results from all the surveys. And then I just kind of, I just want to walk through this for a second for myself and for others. So in the next, we do an update like this probably every planning commission meeting, or every other?
The second, yes, the second Thursday of every month, we've earmarked for master plan updates, whether there's proposals to review or not.
And on the website, there's the dates of all the meetings, along with the agenda. So if people see that there's a master plan update, they could come and attend and possibly comment on that if they wanted to.
Correct. Once the information's available, it's posted online.
Okay. And so then this, our big team's goal is to have this master plan update, which is done every five years, complete in October, I think is what we said. Is that right, or?
Yep.
We're working towards that. So the public will have plenty of time to comment between now and then.
Yes. And so, just for clarification, my name is Megan Massiminak. I'm also with Carlo Wartman, the planning consultants for the township. In terms of what the process is, we are aiming to have a first draft done by the end of May, so that's two months. The reason that we need the draft done at that point is that by state law, there's a three-month review period for adjoining communities in the county. At that point in time, also, what we would intend to do is to share the draft with the community and have a community open house event around that. But because of that three-month... But because of that three-month window, it really puts a constraint on it with the goal of having a draft approved by October. And so how that goes is that you would approve a draft to be released to, to communities, you would recommend that to the township board. The township board then is the entity that releases it to the adjacent communities. And after that three-month review by state law, you have to have a public hearing at the planning commission. So again, that would be a time where people could come and share their thoughts. But in between that time, we would have a public event where there would be opportunity to comment. And then also anytime that, then the planning commission makes a recommendation and the township board approves. So anytime that there's a meeting of the planning commission and township board, it's a public meeting. If people would like to be notified, what we're doing is we are, have an email list that I'm sure several people in the audience I know have been on. And so for any time, this is going to be in a planning commission agenda or there's a master plan event, we will notify people at least a week ahead of time. And so if you want to be on that list, if you could please just contact Cheryl Lotan at the building department here at Oxford Township, she'll be able to put you on that list.
Thank you. So if, I mean, we can discuss further, if there's another comments kind of as it relates to the survey or the community event, we can move on to the other two sections that we have you guys reviewing this evening.
I just make a final comment, I felt some of the data was very interesting. Some was conflicting a little bit to each other, but that usually happens within a survey. And I felt one of the other parts that you did not mention was who, who should homes or new homes be built for? And I think one of them was seniors and the other one was young families.
Young families, yeah.
Were the two largest ones, the other ones were rated lower. So, and for those in the audience, one of the things that we review is what type of housing do we have in the community so far? And I believe the average value of the homes in Oxford now is like $450,000.
Yeah.
Roughly around that. So the question is, how can young families afford to move in to Oxford Township for an average house price of $450,000? So it kind of dispels or encourages that we might have to look at different types of housing to help those young families that could afford to move into the township based on the survey.
Correct, yeah. I thought I'd put it in, I promise.
Any other questions for us on that?
Okay. All right, so then the, the next section that we were going to take a look at this evening was the goals and objectives. So if you guys remember a few meetings ago, we did the exercise with the goals, objectives on the whiteboards, kind of marked them up. We took that information, you know, as well as information from the surveys, from the community events, basically since this whole process started. And we're ready to kind of put in front of you some updated goals and objectives. So kind of like we did the last meeting, we've got some questions that we'd like to answer. I'll go one by one, teach commissioner for the, for each question. And give me, give me a response in a sentence or two, and then after everybody's responded, you know, we can talk about it more, we can move on to the next question. So as it relates to the goals and objectives, do the revised goals and objectives articulate the vision for Oxford Township, Commissioner Wolchek?
I'm sorry, ask the question one more time.
Do the goals and objectives articulate the vision for Oxford Township?
I believe so.
Not to, not to interrupt on this, is this something maybe we should discuss when all seven are available? Or are you okay?
This is, this is not the end-all, be-all. So if the other commissioners that are absent this evening have any comments to make, they can provide that to us at an important time. So to answer your question politely, no, we're good. Commissioner Nold?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiz?
I'm going to be different.
Oh.
I'm going to say, I don't know, because based on the survey and the open house, I think we need to go back and review them all based on that info. Just to, when I say, maybe in the order of the objectives. Do I think all the objectives we have listed are accurate? Yes. But we may have to put what's objective one, two, and three, and it might be three goes to one. We move some things around in order, based on the survey. So I think we need to look at it one more time, based on the results that we now have.
Okay.
Eric?
One comment that I was thinking in the background is that the open house was much different than the survey. And the survey produced information to us, I'd like to ask the members of the audience if I could, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
How many of you answered the surveys? Could you raise your hand?
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That feedback helps us make decisions, just like the open house was a much, much different avenue. And I, I was at the open house and I appreciate the open house far more personally than I did the survey, because you had one-on-one contact. I'd like to see the open house racked and stacked by itself and then compared it to the same, a likeness to the survey.
Sure. I mean, I think, and I, I don't disagree, I think for me, right, they were structured differently, maybe they asked some different questions or presented different information. I do feel as though common themes arose from both, but I don't disagree.
Those that were there heard and felt those common themes, we have a common theme from tonight's meeting. But how does that common theme thread through the survey, through the, through the rest of the things?
Sure.
That's what I'm interested in, is that common theme.
And I think that's probably, you know, that's kind of the point of reviewing these goals and objectives. And again, there, there are more avenues than just this evening to provide feedback on them. Okay, with that, Commissioner Wolchek, were there any changes, additions, deletions, edits that you felt were needed to what we presented?
I need more time to review the information.
Okay. Commissioner Nold?
I need to review that information.
Commissioner Bailey?
I don't think so.
Okay. Commissioner Spiz?
Similar to my previous comment, it's just restructuring.
Gotcha. Structure. Okay. All right. Commissioner Wolchek, I would, I would be comfortable in assuming that for these other questions, you'd like some more time to review, to provide feedback.
Yeah, definitely, this packet, this, some of the information was not available on the township website. There's 352 pages in the packet and from 250-something on was, my computer kept shutting down.
Sure.
And I'm not sure if it was a computer issue, I tried different devices, but I could not access all the information to make an informed decision.
Okay. Commissioner Nold? So the question being, the question that we're up to, are there any additional categories needed?
I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay, and last but not least, should an overall vision for the township be included? So you have goals and you objectives, vision is kind of that, that front paragraph or two that, that provides an umbrella theme for what they're about to read in goals and objectives.
I don't get some.
I agree, there should be a vision.
Any clarification, you're talking about the vision in front of our master plan, when we open the front page, it says mission?
No, this, this is in the, this is in the section itself, it kind of goes vision, goals, objectives. They kind of trickle down from umbrella statements to specifics.
I think I lost my train of thought. Ask your question again, please.
You ask the question. No, no, so my point being is, vision is kind of the broad statement that kind of paints the theme that people are about to dive deeper into with the goals and then even deeper in the objectives. So it's kind of like, it's a broad stroke.
So the question is, should there be a vision? Right now in your current 2019 master plan, there's not a vision articulated.
We talked about that in the steering committee, and I think the steering committee suggested there needed to be, correct me if I'm wrong.
I agree with you, I think John and I are in the steering committee for the master plan.
Okay.
Is it okay for me to just mention it for a second? And, you know, the public's input on that is important, I think, us creating, you know, what does the future of Oxford look like? And that's the vision, you know, I think as a community, with that input from the master plan or from the surveys, we want to create that.
Okay. We'll write that the next time and have something to do with it, in order to help us, can I give you a challenge?
Sure.
Okay.
It's coming.
What, from each of you, one to two words about what should be in that vision about Oxford Township?
That's it, one or two, not one or two sentences, just one or two words?
One or two words, why I put one or two words, because I know I'll get one or two sentences, so I have to...
I can start if you don't mind. It's okay?
Yeah.
Preserve what we have, I think, I would, I like that phrase.
Yeah, okay, who's next?
Recreation.
Recreation?
It's based on the survey.
Growth and preservation.
Growth and preservation?
I can't answer that with just three words, but I have to talk, small town feel.
Small town feel.
And the reason I say that is, is that when we, when new people move into the township, they have an opportunity, come into the township and get their welcome package. On the way out the door, CJ has been very kind to do a lot of interviewing and writing up, you know, on Facebook about those. And one of the major themes that I picked up from that is the small town feel. So I don't know if that's something that wants to be included or not.
All right.
And I was going to say, interconnectability based on the pass.
Interconnectability based on the past?
Is that three sentences on its own?
No, based on the safety passes.
Safety pass, P-A, P-A, yeah, okay. All right.
You didn't have to have all three words ordered, did you?
So, all right, so I think what we'll do the next time is, we're going to start producing chapters. So you'll have background chapters, introductory chapters, things, and a goal, a vision, goals and objectives chapter. The next time, we're going to have fancy formatting, but please don't be intimidated by that and that it can always change.
I'll try not to critique. So all the maps are really big.
I'm sure, yes. And I wish you had been there, Mr. Spiz, at the open house, because we made the directions as big as possible.
Thank you.
And it was an excellent comment. All right, thanks.
So, I mean, if there's, it's kind of, we've got our directives on vision. Sounds like, you know, the goals, objectives, we can kind of review against more of the survey data and the community event data and as far as kind of the order in which it's presented. We can kind of work with to kind of highlight the, the flow of responses that we got. Okay. So then, the last master plan update item was the future land use categories. And so with this, and we've talked about before, you know, the goals, objectives, the future land use map and designations are a big part of what we use when we're reviewing. Current developments, current zoning decisions, future developments, things of that nature. And so what we wanted to do at least tonight was to present with you the, the future land use designations that we've kind of modified based on what you currently have. And some of the feedback that we've gotten, again, from the planning commission, from the public, from the work that we do in the community. And we have the three questions that we like to ask, you know, the same order, kind of which will go down them. So before I start, are there any overall questions or clarifications about the future land use designations? Mr. Nold?
We talked about that, we talked about in a meeting, we like to see it in a certain way compared to other communities. Is this rolling this all up now in our future land use?
It started to, yes. And we tried to, so one of the things that we tried to, because kind of what we took from that is you like the specificity of your current map, the way it's laid out. I think you like the variety of your designations, although we did kind of look for areas of efficiency. So you have 21 designations, we went down to 18. And some of that was more or less, some of the combination of what we felt were some redundant residential characteristics, but more or less like you have office service and office, office and office. You know, and light industrial, and then there's research and development, those two are slowly kind of coming synonymous. So we just kind of looked to make some efficiencies in your designation so that you've got 18 colors on your board and not 21.
So are we going to have a definition for all 18 of those colors?
Correct, and that, that's some of the information that was presented tonight was kind of our, some of them were heavily modified, some of them left relatively alone. Primarily the recreational, the institutional, the public spaces, those, those were tweaked a little bit, but not to any great degree. So I guess with that, I'll start with Commissioner Wolchek, do the revised future land categories articulate the vision of Oxford Township?
It's mostly just a...
I'm sorry.
And that's okay, it's, it's a tough one.
My last name, I mean, you can butcher my last name.
I guess I have some quick question. The township has residential, usually has a color, right, on the map? Does it differentiate the different?
Yeah, and so, and so for reference, I have your current, your current future land.
Like R1, R2, R3, right?
Right.
The different densities, because density keeps, is like a recurring theme, what I hear in the community.
Yeah.
It's density, 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 and...
So your future land use map currently uses the minimum lot size, like designation? It applies it to each designation just like in your zoning? We did not change that in our revisions, the only thing that we did was combine some of, some of the ranges.
I just like the, you know, this, this thing about density keeps on coming up and...
You retain, my apologies, I, I'm cutting you off.
No, no, you're, you're fine, I, um... Density's an issue, I think I've said that already, but I'd like to understand how we can put that into the master plan to help direct. And, you know, hearing the voices of everyone tonight.
Right.
To help with, development's going to happen, but how can we manage it?
And so kind of what we're doing, and so what we have in front of you are the designation descriptions. Putting them on the map is not the stage that we're at yet. Kind of what we want to make sure is, do you, are these the tools that you want to use to then kind of inform what that map is going to be?
I think about the public too, because I was in those seats three years ago, and that's why I'm sitting here now, because I was confused in the process and I couldn't, I didn't understand all these different things that were going on in development, came to our neighborhood. And I couldn't, it took a long time for me to come to speed and understand what was happening. And I'm, I'm hoping that through this process, we can figure out a way to be, I don't know, transparent is the right word? Because I think it's transparent, it's just difficult to find information sometimes, as I'm hearing from people. So, you know, to find that, when I found out there were three different levels of residential development that could happen within a township, I was really surprised.
Sure.
So that, I guess that, I don't know if I answered your question about land use.
I mean, I guess, I guess what I would, what I would give you to maybe help you answer the question, if you feel comfortable doing so, is, do the, do the categories articulate the vision of Oxford Township? Your residential categories, for the most part, have retained the minimum lot sizes that you currently have. I think the only thing that we did was we kind of broke out the 25,000 square feet and then the 9,000 to 12,000 square feet into their own categories. But you've still got 20, you've got 10, I'm referencing acres, you've got five, you've got one, you've got a half. So there are multiple designations that refer to multiple densities in the current draft land use designations. So again, so to that point, do you, would you, do you feel as though they articulate the vision of Oxford Township?
Articulate the vision, right, we're still trying to create the vision, not to try to answer all the question, but if the community has a vision that we're trying to develop, right? We're not, I think, I think I guess that my answer is I need more information to make an educated decision.
That's right, this won't be the last time to be able to run it. Thank you. Mr. Nold?
I like the reduction from down to 18.
Okay.
How many 18 do?
No, we went from 21 to 18. Yeah, we're at 18.
It's easier for me to remember it.
I like the reduction down to 18. One question, and I wasn't there for the open house, but did we have a survey question or something that asked? What is the minimum that the community wants to see in a lot size?
I think they probably really...
Support, like their questions about whether the community supports a lot size support or opposed.
The survey talked about, and gave examples of subdivisions, or pictures.
It gave, in the survey, for each type of lot, it gave an aerial photo that showed how many, how many lots could fit in the same space based on that minimum lot size. And that's when we were asking, can these go anywhere in the, if more are built, can they go anywhere in the township only where they're allowed? And, or there shouldn't be any more type of housing like this. The reason we structured it that way is because you have areas that are currently zoned for all those lot sizes. And to, to upzone those, so to, let's say, eliminate all 9,000 square foot lots, is going to put the township in a legally precarious position. Because people have property rights. If they've moved into a place where it's a 20 acre minimum lot size, they know when they buy their, when they bought that property, what the restrictions were on it. Just as if someone bought property where at the 9,000 square foot, they have certain expectations. And so if we change that through the master plan without really substantial reasons, such as, we're not going to be able to extend... such as, we're not going to be able to extend infrastructure to those areas, then, then you're in a legally precarious position. We wouldn't advise doing that in your master plan.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So, and generally, I think, and I worked the table at the open house, where people were looking at the future, at the current zoning, and saying whether it should change or not. And if you look at those pictures in the report, you'll see, by far, people wanted to preserve the zoning as it is, your land use regulations as it are, except for multiple family. And when we were asked what should happen there, people were asking that it not be multiple family, that it be some sort of less dense development, which again, you would have to have some very good reasons as to why to do that, because you may be setting up the township for a legal position, which of course, if you wanted to, you could take, but we would be advising you what those risks would be during that decision.
Sure. Thank you.
Welcome.
We're still talking about articulating the vision. Okay. So, Mr. Bailey, did you have any, I mean, as far as, again, the future land use designations that we've added and put forward, do you feel as though, again, the vision isn't worse, but from the general theme of what we discussed, do you feel that they are?
I believe they are.
Mr. Spiz?
Say in general, yes. I know you went from 21 to 18. I'm hopeful we can squeeze it down.
A little more?
I like data, I like information, but sometimes you get data overload if you have too many.
Sure.
If it's possible, I'd say squeeze it a little more.
Mr. Jerry?
A little more.
I might suggest we offer an open invitation for feedback from the other members that aren't here tonight, to see if they have any thoughts on this too.
Sure. Yeah, again, you guys know how to find me, so. Okay, so then with that in mind, there were some, there were some kind of new categories, again, some got, some kind of got assimilated into each other if they were close in nature. So, you know, again, left and right, do you feel as though those, those new categories are appropriate?
Again, I need to review the information.
That's fine, that's fine. They were, some of the, again, so the village residiencials got merged, again, talking about 25,000 square foot lots, 9,000, 12,000. And then we also did a little bit of consolidation in the industrial, and then there was a kind of an, an open-ended overlay district that we proposed to kind of allow for some flexibility in use and design in certain parts of the community. So just for, for when you have the, you know, have the ability to take a look at those other categories I'm referring to. Mr. Knoll?
I need more time to look at that overlay.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
I, I agree with it, but yeah, I'd like to look at it a little more.
Okay. Mr. Spiz?
I'm okay with it, I actually liked the overlay. It allows some flexibility, it's like one of the things we talked about last time, that we took from some other communities that are using something similar.
Sure. And so, to provide a little bit of context for that overlay, just basically, there's a few things that influenced that, just as you guys review it, kind of on a large scale, it was, it's influenced by some things that are happening in, in the industry as it relates to these, these organizations that really don't have a single use anymore. So, looking at like Amazon, you know, Amazon's gone from online sales to a distribution company, a logistics company, a content company, an R&amp;D company, they need office space, they need workers. And so, they've started to model, how can they start to consolidate uses onto single sites or adjacent sites? And you start pulling in too many uses, and whether you want it or you don't, you have to say no, because your zoning doesn't allow for it. The other kind of consideration for was, is that you have areas in the township where the parcels are, are so small or odd shaped, that it doesn't matter what zoning designation you give them, they cannot conform to current development standards, and that really steins development. So, an overlay like this might be able to open up to say, you know, we get the lot sizes kind of off, but if you've got an idea of how it might work and improve the community, at least this provides you the substantiation to consider it, as opposed to saying, we don't have anything that we can consider this under. One of the, yeah, and for, and I guess the kind of last point of it is that a lot of zoning is proactive, which isn't a bad thing, but, you know, we all know that economies change, needs change, uses change, demographics change, and I don't think I'm going on a ledge on saying that regulation typically cannot change as quickly as those things do. So this was kind of proposed as a, maybe it's, maybe it's a little bit more of a reactive option than a proactive option, to say, if the market has an idea for this lot, we want to have, we at least want to have the ability to consider it, as opposed to having nothing on paper that does. So just to provide, when you guys kind of, you know, have a little bit of time to dive deeper into that, happy to answer any questions, you know, at the next meeting.
Sure.
And then based on what you've been able to review, again, kind of are there any changes, additions, deletions needed? And again, I, we can take that information at a later date and time, but...
It's okay. 2019 master plan has a few pages that talk about potential roads being built for alleviating some of the congestion, and I don't think we addressed specific questions about that, other than, how do you feel about traffic, generally speaking, right? So, I think, you already know, go ahead.
So, well, I just want to, I had a good conversation with T.J. Connolly at the road commission this week, because as it was alluded to, but not really discussed earlier, the township doesn't control the roads, the road commission does, and then also MDOT controls the pier road. Well, they, they have jurisdiction over it, the county maintains it. And so, we as a township don't have a lot of control, but what we can do is put things in the plan, like those roads. However, that, those roads have been in there for a long time, and they haven't happened. So one of the things in talking with TJ is, I asked specifically, if we have these in here, and for them to take traffic, with the idea that they would take traffic off the pier, and help with some of the congestion, how does that really work with the road commission no longer taking, they no longer take residential subdivisions? So if water stone was built today, or this new sub was coming in, it all has to be private roads. So if a piece of...
That's true.
They're not taking any residential roads, so...
I'll talk to Dennis.
If they were, please.
I will.
So, what, in my interview with Mr. Connolly, he said that if there became an opportunity through, let's say, residential subdivision, or some sort of development to extend those roads, that really at, early on, the road commission would need to be involved in order for them to make sure that they would be able to take over that road, and it could be in their system, because their system is already underfunded, and they're not looking to take on much more. Also, they interview the townships, all the townships once every two years with a strategic plan, and so what we'll do is take those strategic plan items that were done last year, put them in the master plan, and put that process in. Also, what I would suggest is that we include not only extension of roads, but requests for paving of roads. The majority of your roads are residential gravel roads. And so, to have a good circulation system that's for vehicles, primarily gravel isn't going to help you. And so, even just having plans and having those priorities there in the master plan, I think would help as the township goes forward to advocate for more, more paving and where those should be.
I mean, with the residential, village roads are controlled by the village.
Yes.
Township roads, they're outside of it, and so township really has no oversight over it. Oxford likes, for example.
So did I answer your question?
Kind of, like, I'm thinking not so much about residential, but about down lot, for example, right?
Mm-hmm.
That could be used as a sort of a ring road to avoid downtown.
Yes.
In the master plan, that we could look at, because we're getting this feedback from the community about congestion, and there's ways that we can start to look at finding property, or land, or whatever that strategy is to help with traffic.
Yeah, absolutely.
We hear about it, it's, it's all over the surveys, between density and traffic, those are two big things that, if, I think, we can focus on and try to make an impact on, would be helpful to the community.
So, when we come back the next time, we'll also draft about traffic, and what we'll do is use that 2019 master plan as a base, and then add in the things that we've discussed.
Would it be worth it to draw that, what is in the words inside the master plan of 2019, draw that on a, on a map, and start to visualize it as becoming real someday?
Yeah, I think, I, I...
Right now it's just words, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's just a few sentences, and it's not, it doesn't, it's really got to think, look at a plan, and read the words, and understand where this vision was at one time.
I think that's a great idea. It also helps us, helps us provide information to the road commission, and to help the township board, and/or supervisor, and/or someone else at the county, or other people to help pressure the road commission where we can. If we need another road to be built to take some stress off 24, you know, to connect some things, it's something we would have to push with the road commission, because they're just not going to do it themselves, because they don't know our community like we do. So we'd have to get in front of them and push, use our resources to our advantage.
True.
The 2019 master plan and the one before that talks about roads. It calls out a series of roads that are, were on a hit list to do something with, within the township. And sometimes we talk about roads that might not necessarily mean we want to pave, we want to trail a new road, we want to improve an existing road. We need to, I've said this before, we need to work off our forefathers' thoughts on that list, and see if it's worth carrying over to our new master plan, not only worth putting in the master plan, but worth the township pursuing from administration point of view. And there's been lots of, people talk about different ideas in regards to roads, and paving of roads, or putting through roads through, and I don't want to get into all those little pockets, but we need to glean out the old master plan, we need to talk with administration to find out what they're thinking, and what some of the other people are thinking, and what we could do with possibly new roads and our existing roads, and those existing roads could be paving some of the gravel roads.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, so what we're hearing is, vision, goals and objectives, we're on the right path, need to have a vision, that comes back to you at the next meeting. Also, what I heard was, if we could have a comparison between the survey and the open house in terms of where data agreed, and where there was conflicts or tension. And then, in terms of future land use categories, on the right track, we'll put it on, we'll put those on a map, keeping the open mind overlay and the consolidation of those to 18. And then also, next time, we really do need to dig into a traffic plan, and have at least a map and some, some checks to look at.
There was some questions asked in the survey, it came up at the Legacy Center, if the community willing to pay to have some of our roads improved. And right now, the township puts money out for gravel roads, does the township need to put money out to take, to improve gravel roads, possibly to pave roads? And I talked all about the scenario of cost to the township. So I'd be interested to see how that information correlates back to the topic we had about improving the roads.
Okay. Anything else in terms of instructions or requests from us, in order for us to have the proper materials to you for your April meeting?
No. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number 11, new business. Communication, committee reports. I wasn't at the last ordinance review.
Given economics...
Yeah, we can talk about the economics issue first.
Not the new report, but we did have the community breakfast at the Oxford Chamber, and we did present some things from a county perspective that are out there for the businesses within town to take advantage of, take advantage of if they so choose. So, but we did also talk about potentially getting together and putting some different things together for the township itself.
Very nice.
It'll be more common in the near future.
Very nice. Thank you. Nothing from the ordinance review? Anything else that you want to talk about? I don't see Mr. Sharp, so...
There's a report in the pack.
There is a report in the pack. Okay. I guess if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
9:20, take a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank Travis Holmes.